I want to say to you, we had the opportunity to hear from many of you about your concerns about the reopening. The reopening, as you know, will take place August 26th, when classes either remotely or online will be held for the first two weeks as we move our students in who will be living on campus in a phased-in approach and we will allow others to come on the campus and have classes live September 8. Thank you for the many questions that you asked in advance. And I have asked my colleagues to prepare to answer as many of those questions as possible, as well as leaving some time at the end for you to ask additional questions if they have not already been answered by my colleagues based on the questions that we received. At this time, I'd like to tell you that we continue to care greatly for you and we continue to do what is in the best interest of our community. And I'd like to turn it over to my colleagues.
Thank you, Dr. Jay. And to all the students out there, we just want to say thank you so very much for the questions that you sent to us via email. You were able to review those questions this afternoon. And so we will answer them in the most thematic way. And just a couple of different ways. So for example, we receive questions regarding opening of school, with regard to testing, with regard to some financial matters, and also just with regard to just housing and dining. And so we've kind of grouped them in that particular manner. So one of the first questions we wanted to answer is with regard to what happens on our campus if there is in fact an outbreak of COVID-19? And so, for example, one of the questions was, "What are NSU's plans for the likely outbreak of COVID among students and their faculty?" Well, I can answer that really in one, in one way. If there is an outbreak, and hopefully there will not be, but if there is an outbreak, we will actually shift to an online platform or online mode of operation, much like we did in the spring of this particular year. So people may actually have to go or return home. And then with regard to faculty and staff, they may have to work remotely. But the bottom line is there, is we want to make sure that we are upholding everyone's health and safety to the highest. And if that does have to happen, then you will switch to that particular mode of operation. Again, and if it gets to that point, we will make that decision. And of course, if that decision is made, you will be communicated through multiple ways, via email, but also through our emergency notification system, EverBridge, which could also be sent to your phones via text, and of course, to university's webpage. So those would be the particular modes of communication that we would send information to you regarding any type of outbreak or any other COVID-related matters. And also with regard, and also with regard to parents, we will also be communicating to parents in a similar way, also texting information to parents as well as giving that information via email. We also have a parents page that will be updated throughout the semester.
One of the questions that we were asked is, "How would NSU ensure everyone adds to the new gap? What happens if they don't practice social distancing or they don't wear the mask? We're going to be very vigilant about trying to enforce that. Students will be, will be subject to the student code of conduct should they opt not to comply with the policies and guidelines that we can represent to them. So as far as what's going to be our level of tolerance? The level of tolerance is not going to be very, very high. It's not just about your safety, but it's about the safety of others around you. So we really hope that our student body comes here geared up to provide support that we need from you. You guys have probably seen on TV lately, some schools have opened and people have thrown big parties, so on and so forth, and it's spread the virus and it's just kind of permeated throughout the community. We don't want that on our campus. So we're going to be very, again, as I mentioned earlier, we're going to be vigilant on it, we're going to be matter-of-factish about it, and we just want to serve notice that if students come in and don't want to play by the rules that we play now, we're going to be very, we're going to take action quickly, quickly. So don't want anyone to come in not understanding that this is really as, as Jay said last year, family affair. Everybody has, has a role to play in it, everybody's expected to play their role in order for us to keep our campus safe and keep our school open. The next question that we have relates to how can students drop and add classes within the first, the first two weeks of remote? Basically, you can do that, but just a matter of, most of you probably know who your advisor is, and your advisor's anyone who's on your schedule, that is the person that you think is your advisor. Contact your advisor, and your advisor will get what you registered off and make the appropriate paperwork necessary for you to drop the class. There's an add-drop period, so sometime I'm thinking if you drop a class, you might want to add the class, because you still want to be cognizant of the fact that you're trying to be full-time. So don't drop classes and become a part-time and have your financial aid adjusted, and you wonder why all of a sudden you end up with a bill. So make sure that you talk to your advisor, find out the implications of you dropping class, especially if you drop a little 12 hours and you start at 12 hours, because your financial aid will be adjusted, and we don't want you ending up with a bill. If you have some issues and concerns about that or some questions about it, don't hesitate to reach out to the financial aid officer and get clarification on the impact of you dropping the class. The bookstore, the bookstore will be open for you to get your books, as well as return books that you purchased that may not be, may not be needed. So if you buy a book and all of a sudden, the class, the modality of the class dictates that you no longer need the book, the book can be returned to the bookstore. So you won't be stuck with the book. Homecoming, 85th and Princess Homecoming. That's still being discussed, we don't, we haven't made any final decisions. I will tell you, there's a very high probability, a likelihood, that homecoming as we know it in the past would not be the homecoming this year. However, we are trying to put some things together, maybe virtually, maybe some special projects or something to kind of get you all engaged with the school. But as far as homecoming, being what we have become accustomed to, is very unlikely that that will be the case for this current upcoming school year. Personal protective equipment. When you arrive at school, you're going to be given a blanket. It's going to have a couple of things in it. You're going to have a thermometer, you're going to have a mask, you're going to have some sanitizers, and you're going to have a set of gloves. It will be your PP that's going to be issued to you upon arriving on campus. That doesn't mean that when your sanitizer expires, you no longer have the sanitizer. We'll have a replenishment stock on hand for, for the sanitizers and the masks. We really want you to safeguard the thermometer, because one of the things that we're going to ask you to do every day is to take your temperature. If your temperature registered below 100.4, and we're going to assume that you're going to have it. If your temperature reaches 100.4, you have now, at that point, become symptomatic. So at that time period, you may be put into quarantine when we do another test on you and subsequently wait for the results to come back. 100.4.
And please note that there are also other hand-sanitizing stations all around campus and also within our residential facilities and campus buildings. So there will also be PP in that regard as well. So once you arrive here, make sure that, make sure you look for those and where they are, where they're located. So those particular items will also be available to students to use. With regard to dining hall operations, so the schedule will remain the same much as it did last year, there will be three meal times every day. However, the mode of dining will be different. It will be a grab-and-go operation, so there won't be the standard dine-in operation. So you will be allowed to come in to grab your food items and then return to your residence hall room or other potential locations.
The next area refers to room and other refunds. The question is, will there be adjustments to your bills if we adjust the time period that you're here? The tuition costs will not be adjusted, because you're going to still get the same number of required contact hours. For example, if it's a one-hour class, you require 15 contact hours. If it's a three-hour class, you require four to five contact hours. So your schedule, as you first saw it, may be adjusted with those extra 15 minutes that could adjust your whole day, so pay, pay close attention when you look at the most caring listing of available courses to see what, what kind of time periods are being adjusted for that. If you don't, for example, if you, your first 10 days, you would, you would not be charged your room charge and your meal charge for those first two weeks that you are not in class. When I say first, it's actually, it's actually 14 days, first 14 days. So you will not be charged for that. However, the, again, as I stated earlier, tuition charge is the same, because you're getting exactly what you paid for with tuition, whether it's 13 weeks or whether it's 15 weeks, your contact hours remain intact. Another question says, if a student decides to forfeit housing this semester, when is the last day decision can be made? And would they be guaranteed housing for the next semester? Once you move into housing, once you move into housing, you're going to be charged at pro-aided. Let's say you, you move out of housing before the end of semester, your charges would be pro-aided based upon the number of days that you stayed in house. There is a very good likelihood that if you want housing for the second semester, if you move out the first semester, and that you want housing for the second semester, the housing will be available. We do anticipate this through graduation and so forth, that we will have additional space to accommodate you, even if you didn't stay in house the first semester. However, there is a likelihood, I mean, there's a possibility, but not a likelihood, that housing could be fully occupied, depending upon the scenario for the spring semester. The next question is, will student accounts adjust your, adjust your charges based on online class? Online classes, face-to-face classes, remote classes, for the tuition component, all, they all have the same charge. So that's not a reduced charge because you get the most, because of the modality of the class. So the answer to that is, you will pay the same charge for tuition. Move-in. I think move-in was probably the most controversial topic from last week's announcement, because some of you had move-in dates or some of you made preparations for those move-in dates. And I, as Dr. Adam Gass, you know, I want to send my apologies to you all for that as well. But again, safety was the first and foremost thing in our mind. And there were some protocols that we want to have in place to be able to bring you to the campus, and those protocols could not be put in place at the time we wanted you to come to the campus. As a result, we adjusted your report to campus time period. Some of you are waiting to be notified by housing as to what is your actual new move-in date. I assure you, housing is currently in the process of doing that as we speak, and those are going to be sent out to you as soon as possible. I expect, I expect most of those announcements and you to get those announcements sometimes around the middle of this week. Another question that I have is, now that move-in day is spread out over four, now the move-in day is spread out over four days and one hour time period, you know, where you have more time to do that? And the response to that is, the idea is that you still move in, your current two individuals, or whoever the two individuals may be, can come to you and give you a place squared away. What we recommend you do, unlike in the past, because in the past what you would do is move in, then you go to Walmart and talks, and you get other things, you come back. We're actually suggesting to you, do that before you show up on campus, because, because the timeline is so tight, and we really are anticipating moving people through for a one-hour period of time. The next question relates to security. Is there security on campus 24 hours specifically in the residence dorm, in the dorm building? Security is 24 hours, however, you're not going to have a police officer stationed in a residence hall. However, the police officers will be required to patrol the residence hall as part of its normal beat. So, so our security, our police patrol is, is still going to be a 24-hour ordeal. The next area that has been questioned refers to cleaning procedures. We have a schedule, if you look at our plan online, it's outlined as to when we hit the common areas and when we hit those sensitive areas that need more frequent cleaning. I would tell you that areas that need more frequent cleaning will get it, for example, your showers. If the shower is nasty, we don't want you using the shower, especially in those buildings that have the community bathrooms on the wings. You know, we will have people there to constantly ensure that that shower is sanitized before the next person comes in and uses it. For your, your common areas, your classrooms, here's where we need your support, because sometimes you have classes that are back-to-back. Those classes are back-to-back, there's not time to come in and sanitize the classroom and wait 15 minutes before the next class starts. So we're going to ask you all, first of all, we're going to have sanitation, we're going to have sanitizers in the classroom, we're going to have Clorox wipes in the classroom. So we're going to ask every student, when you walk into a classroom, don't assume that the person before you cleaned. Clean your personal space, and we're going to ask the professors to clean down space as well, so when the next professor comes in, it will be, they're sanitized and cleaned. But again, without assuming that the person that was in there prior to it done so, when you come in, take your wipes and wipe down your personal space that you're going to occupy, so that we can ensure that it's, no such thing is too clean. So, so if you go ahead and clean it a second time, that's, that's just as well. Another question is, how would the bathroom be utilized? Is there a sign-up sheet for you? I can answer that, but I also know we have the Vice President for Student Affairs on the line, Dr. Brown. Dr. Brown, are you, are you available to speak to the bathrooms and how we're going to handle those?
I'm, I'm not sure if you can hear me well or not, but let me know if you cannot. We're working right now. Okay, great, thank you. We're working specifically with the residence hall staff and the, the cleaning staff that work directly with and in the residence hall staff to try to make sure that we are assigning students in particular areas to particular bathrooms to minimize the use of those particular facilities. So again, that's something that they're working on. When students move in, their RAs will be talking with them about that process to try, again, try to minimize the number of people that are using specific facilities. And I think, as you mentioned earlier, Dr. Shackelford, to also allow us to ensure that those are cleaned as frequently as we can. Does that answer the question that was asked?
Yes, it does. And the thing is, we want to make sure that students understand there is never a need for you being in an unsanitized space. If you, if your identified space is not clean, please notify a resident director or someone, and we will make sure that we make the place sanitized. And the next area that we're going to get into is testing and tracing.
Thank you. Yeah, one question I did want to answer, one, one student did ask, oh, sorry. We did get one question before I move on to testing and tracing with regards to returning students and when they will move in. In our original communication, you may have noted that for first-year incoming students, freshman students, the move-in timeframe is going to be August 29th through September 1st. For returning students, it will be September 2nd through September 7th. Those will be the move-in timeframes, especially for first-year incoming students and then for returning students. So with regard to testing and tracing, one of the questions was, actually, I'm going to combine two questions, and those questions were, will students have wrapped the results of COVID testing? And how soon will students know COVID testing results? As of now, that timeframe is actually between 24 and 48 hours, when a student will know the results of their COVID-19 test. Next question is, if an all-campus student tests positive for COVID-19, where do you intend to quarantine them? And has the residence hall been set aside for that or are you partnering with local apartment complexes? So I answered that first question. If an all-campus student tests positive for COVID-19, where do you intend to quarantine them? Well, I'm answering this way, the question is, we will quarantine them. The, there are all-campus spaces that we have set aside specifically for quarantine purposes. It's actually in what we call the new residence hall, so that's where those particular spaces are located. And so, but the second part of the question, so there has not been a local apartment complex set aside for this, we will have quarantine here on campus. And that's also a way to make sure that we can provide the care and attention that is necessary and needed for students that may test positive for COVID-19. With regard to contact tracing, the question was, will the state's contact tracing program, also known as COVID Wise, be part of our contact tracing process? And the answer to that question is yes, we will use COVID-19, I'm sorry, we will use COVID Wise to trace for COVID-19. That said, as we progress into the semester and see how things are going, we will continue just to monitor things, and we will also consider other ways to supplement the state's contract tracing system. With regards to will there be a quarantine period while waiting COVID test results, I will refer back to Dr. Shackelford or Dr. Brown for quarantine period.
There will be a quarantine period for those who take the test. And first of all, if you show symptoms of the virus, you're going to automatically be quarantined. And that quarantine will be lifted until the medical personnel have done what they need to do to ascertain whether that is safe for you to be released from the quarantine. As Dr. Moses said, we do have rooms set aside on campus anticipating that some of you may be symptomatic. Those who are symptomatic, we're going to still give you a test, because we're testing everybody. When you get here, you will be given the test. The test is going to be a nasal swab. And that test is going to be sent away to our lab. The results we expect back between 24 and 48 hours. If you do not have the symptom, there will be no requirement for us to quarantine you. However, if you are symptomatic and we're waiting for the results of the test, you will be put into quarantine. The next question that we have is, all those students who are living on campus will be tested. You cannot monitor commuter, commuter students. How will you ensure the safety of commuter students while taking into account that some students can have the virus and not show symptoms? And that problem is a problem that persists throughout the world, because if you're asymptomatic, and we're getting the test results back in 24, 48 hours, we won't know that, that you are positive, unless you show some symptoms thereof. And even the commuter students, when they come here, because they're going to be tested that first time on campus as well. If they contract the virus along the way and don't show any symptoms, we would still not have had any reason to quarantine them or isolate them. So as soon as something reveals to us that a student is positive, at that time period, we will isolate them. If there is nothing that demonstrates positivity, then, but they're showing symptoms, we will quarantine them. And again, they will only be released from both sides based upon the recommendation of the medical authorities that's reviewing and that's tracking them throughout the time. A question says, if I test positive for COVID-19 when I come back to campus, does that mean I'm not coming back for the fall semester? No, it does not mean that you're not coming back for the fall semester. However, you will not be allowed back on campus if you come here positive and you have something to show that you're positive. So that means we will try to provide you instructions, either remote or online. At that time period, we'll have to get with the, your advisor and see if we can adjust your schedule to accommodate you. Because it wouldn't make sense to bring you here positive, because we want to know how long you've been positive or what your state of positivity might be. But if you reveal to us that you're positive, then we will not let you move into, move to the residence hall. The next question, and I think I asked the second part, will you be put on an online class? You will be, we're going to make every attempt, every effort to put you in a remote class or an online class. Here's what we have to understand. There are, all of our classes are not remote and all of our classes are not online. We have an equal distribution of online, remote, online, and hybrid class. So, so to think automatically you could be given an online or a remote schedule is not a reality. So you may or may not have a full-time schedule once we put you in the proper classes that, that you need. But we will do everything in our, in our power, using your advisor, to help you reschedule whatever classes you can be placed in to satisfy your academic needs and requirements. The question, I think I answered it, would a student be quarantined until the results come back? Absolutely. If you're in quarantine and we're waiting for the results, you will remain in quarantine until the results come back. Say you're negative, if your results come back and say you're positive, then you trust, then you convert from a quarantine role to isolated role. Dr. Brown, did you want to add anything to what I just said?
I'd just like to, maybe a couple of the nuance with, with those, those questions, right? So just to reiterate what Dr. Shackelford said, we're going to test every student when they're coming back. You are not going to be quarantined right away when you get that initial test. But we're also going to ask you to do symptom checking before you return to campus. And if you do have symptoms, we don't want you to come back to campus. We want you to let us know that. And like Dr. Shackelford said, we will work with you until you are symptom-free before you come back to campus. But we don't want people who have symptoms coming back, coming back to campus. Let us work with you until, you know, we can resolve everything that's, that's involved with that, that process. The other nuance that I heard, or question that I heard was specific around how long someone will be in quarantine. And right now, the CDC is recommending that people are in quarantine between, between 10 and 14 days after they are not symptomatic. After they are not, they have no symptoms, and after they have a positive COVID test. So the key thing that Dr. Shackelford said earlier is that our medical staff will be working with students who are in that situation, and we will work directly with each individual student to say when they are permitted to, to leave quarantine. But that will be based on a medical decision. And again, right now, the CDC is saying that is typically between 10 and 14 days.
To answer the question regarding if you're quarantined, what will happen? All of our classes in the first two weeks, where we are remote and online, will be recorded by the faculty members. So every student will have access to those recorded courses so that in the event you can't log in at that time or for some other reason, you are, you know, you have struggle with being able to be a part of that class, know that all of those classes will be recorded for you during the first two weeks.
We, we recently received some additional questions. First of all, I want to make it clear, because there's a section here that talks about all classes online. I stated earlier, but I want to make sure that we understand. We will do everything we can to accommodate you with remote or online. We would do everything we can to accommodate you with remote or online classes. However, it won't be as easy as it sounds because most of those classes were already filled as part of this screening students prior to us going to divert it. Now here's what I will also say to you. Some of you had classes that showed face-to-face that have been converted to online or remote. So you might want to check the new listing and see what classes have already been diverted from the face-to-face without. The new question are leaving, leaving campus and facing suspension, there were question marks. Again, we have included in our student code of conduct that during this pandemic, we don't want students hosting unsanctioned events and functions and having students present at. When that happens, the student who hosted will likely be suspended. And then this other student that were actually, that have been asked from the beginning are asked not to engage in that, run the risk of going before the student code of conduct as well. I think I answered the first question. The next question talks about the testing, we're going to nose swab. If someone asks a question, what about the MCA saliva test? Are we going to explore that? We just got exposed to that very recently. We're going to wait to see what, you know, what's, what's that? What does, what does it look like? You know, will it be something that we can use as well? And as for someone who doesn't necessarily like nose swab, but is willing to, you know, to spit into a container. I think we already talked about the posture refunds. When we start classes, after we get our test results, when, when you, you start classes on the 26th. So even when you're in quarantine or you're in isolation, wherever you are, no, it's our charge to make you, make the class material available to you. And if for some reason you missed a class, most of the class is going to be recorded. So you can still have the opportunity to make up whatever you missed, whatever you missed. But right now, our game plan is that if you are quarantined, we'll have something set up where you can still log in and communicate with your instructors remotely.
So the next few questions, I'll take, for those who live far away, if there is an outbreak, how will we be notified? That was the question. And as I noted earlier, we will be communicating with you all in multiple ways, including the email notification, emergency system notification, which will come to your phone via text. And also any significant updates will be provided on the university's website. And as we try to do, there will be a banner on the homepage that you will be able to access as soon as accessing the home website. And so for those that are either here on campus or if you are actually participating in our curriculum remotely, you will be notified in the same way. The next question is what will happen during move-in if they have classes on those days? As Dr. J, our president, just noted, professors have been instructed to record their courses or record their classes during that first two weeks period so that they will be accessible for all students. So you will have access to that information, to those classes, to those recorded sessions, even if you happen to be moving in on that particular date and time. The next question is what if you missed the dining times due to class times?
Yeah, the dining hours are pretty much the same. And I want to say it's 11:30 to 2:00 Monday through Friday for the lunch period. The breakfast hours, for those of you that are returning students, they haven't changed. The dinner hours haven't changed. If you missed it, if you missed it, we still have the, the student center will still be open. So I guess the Chick-fil-A will still be available. The facilities that will not be open is, are the, the Spartan Station will not be open and the Legion Dining will not be open. But the West will be open to help with the overflow for students. So remember, the one defeat and component of everything is bread and goat on phase one. And if we transition to phase two, depending upon how phase one, if we transition to phase two, we will have some seating, but it won't be a lot of seating because we will still be practicing social distancing. But we are, we're trying to expand the space that would be used for that. Pretty much say for the most part, even though the meal will be hot meals, it's like a bread and goat, you will still be required to come in, get your meal. You won't be handling any food, all the food will be handled by service. So there is no self-service in this mode. So all the food will be put into a bag, a little white bag, padded or not given to you with your, with your plastic ware and your other napkins and straws, so on and so forth. So, so Dr. J, I think that gives us to the.
If we can, thank you all for your well-thought-out questions and giving us an opportunity to answer them. I very much appreciate that. We're going to go in just a minute to online to see if there are any additional questions that you want to ask us. We hope to be able to hear you personally ask those questions in our last 15 minutes. But before we do that, I do want to say for those of you who were students in the spring of 2020 and you are a student here registered as of March 13th and you are registered to be in classes this fall, the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act, the CARES Act, was awarded to NSU to provide emergency financial aid grants to students. But you had to be enrolled as of March 13th, 2020. So this will not apply to new students, but it will apply to students who are returning students who are registered as we come into this semester. So you need to be registered now. We gave, the university distributed 40% of the dollars in spring 2020 to students who met the eligible eligibility requirements. And the remaining 60% will be distributed to returning students for the fall 2020. That is from those students who were eligible from last spring. Each of you will receive $450 as returning students who were enrolled in the spring, met all criteria. And you will receive that money on beginning August 25th. If you are a student who currently is enrolled in the institution and has direct deposit connected to your account, you'll get it on the 25th. If you're a student who has not done that, you will get the $450 will be sent out in a check on the 26th. And you should receive that in five to seven days. So we want to let you know that for those of you who are returning, that money is coming to you and wanted to get it to you as expeditiously as possible.
Here is a plea for your support. If you are, if you're registered for class, if you're listening to this session and tell me you have every intention of enrolling in school in the fall, we need to make sure that you have done your facts, that you have a financial aid, financial aid package. If you have not done those things, then it tells us that you are prepared to pay our part. If you show up on campus, we're going to do everything in our power to help you make it through the process. When you speak to your parents, if you've gotten all the aid that you think you're eligible for, one of the things that they're recommending to you is to go ahead and do the parent plus application. I think it's important for you to understand why you should do that parent plus application. Because if you get approved for that parent plus, you don't have a problem because you'll get the money you need. If you get denied for the parent plus, the school can automatically loan you an additional $4,000, which may also make you eligible for some assistance money that we have. Because you have done everything that we have asked you to do as far as looking for sources of money to fund your way through school. If you come here and you haven't done the parent plus, we're not going to offer the additional assistance money because we need you to do as much self-help as you can do before we go deeper and deeper and deeper to trying to make it possible and feasible for you to enroll in school. We want you here. We want to do everything in our power to get you here. And we want to support you financially to the extent possible. But we need you to work with us on that.
Okay, we're going to try to unmute. Now there are a lot of you in the room. So if it ends up that there's a lot of feedback, we will probably have to ask you just to stay with the chat. But we're going to try to see if we can unmute you so that there could be some questions, if there are any additional questions. Are there any questions out there? You have to unmute on your side if you want to ask a question. Please don't all unmute at the same time. If you want to ask a question, go ahead and unmute so you can ask a question, please. If you have tried to ask a question but you can't get through, can you send it to the chat room? You should be able to ask a question by unmuting on your side. Do you have any new questions in the chat room? We have a question.
The question is how do we handle commuter students for testing? Commuter students will be given a date and they're reported for the test, to the test site. So you should get that information from the Director of Student Activities, Ms. Terry Gumm. The next question is how do we maintain social distancing with three to four people in a residence hall room? First of all, there are no residence halls that have three to four people in a room. The maximum number of people in anyone room is two people. And we've had confirmed that we can maintain social distancing with that. And for those rooms that may have been two-part rooms in the past, but we couldn't maintain the social distancing, we converted that to a one-party group.
How will ambassadors and Spartan generals return when they come to you with questions? Ambassadors and Spartan generals, will they return with questions?
The ambassador, I'll kick that over to Dr. Brown if he's still on the line. The question is, when do the ambassadors and Spartan generals report to school?
If I heard correctly, the, the questions are when do the ambassadors and Spartan generals report back to, to school? As you, as, as you know, we are trying to figure out what and how the ambassadors and Spartans are going to welcome and support our new students to, to campus. You will get a message specifically from the, the staff and student activities about when we are going to ask you to report back. I think there will be a handful of generals and ambassadors that we're going to ask to come back for those first couple of days with the, the new first-year students. And then we're going to ask the rest of the generals and the ambassadors to come back as they normally would. But you will receive communication from that, from the student activities office. And we should have that completed by the end of this week.
The question is have all houses assignments gone out already? The initial assignments went out. However, the new arrival dates have not all been sent out yet. So I anticipate, and Dr. Brown, you can chime in if necessary. I anticipate that by Wednesday this week, most of the new assignments would have been sent out.
Yes, that is correct. I believe the assignments should be completed. If they're not, then if you haven't received one and you're expecting one, you should be in touch with the Office of Residence Life. But the assignments should have been completed by now. What needs, as you said, Dr. Shackleford, what needs to be communicated and will be communicated shortly is the process for signing up to move back to campus.
And if, and if for some reason you have not gotten it, you can send it to covidnsu.edu to say I'm inquiring about my room assignment. COVID will make sure that the residence hall gets the message and gets back to you. The question is have we identified which residence hall would be used for quarantining? I will again allow Dr. Brown to respond to that.
So you'll have to forgive me because again, I'm new. It's one of the newer residence halls that I believe was planned to be open in, in the spring.
Dr. Brown, that's what it's called, the new residence hall. You got it right.
Okay, all right. So the new residence hall has been identified. And again, we think that's the best space to be able to do the quarantining and isolating for, for students who really need that space.
Will visitation still be allowed during the pandemic? Dr. Brown?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
Will visitation still be allowed during the pandemic?
So there will be some limits to visitation. Again, this, this is all information that the Residence Life, Residence Life staff is preparing and will have available for folks as you are moving in. The residence assistants are, you know, going, going through training online, but they'll also be back a few days early to make sure they also understand the ways in which that we have to adapt how we normally function on campus. Visitation is one of those, those things. And again, that will be addressed by the residence staff when, when folks move in.
And if I could just chime in as the president, again, I want to say our most, what we are really focused on is ensuring to the degree possible a safe environment. And so when we have looked at things like social distancing, both in the classroom and in your residence halls and in your social environments, it still applies. And so there will be certainly limitations like they have been for you in your own home spaces, limitations on what kind of movement can occur in order to create this culture of care and safety.
The question is will the deadline for tuition be pushed back? The deregistration date is, is September the 4th. So that's not pushing it back. So, you know, we still want to get you clear at September 4th, which goes back to that announcement I made about let's make sure our paperwork's straight so that we can help you get through this process, you know, as painless as possible. How will students receive their COVID test results? The health center will notify you of your test result.
Are any classes completely virtual?
Any classes? The questions are, are any classes completed virtual? The question is, are any classes completely virtual online? I think, I'm assuming they mean if English 101 or all the English 101s online, or would some English 101s be online? It's unlikely that all of the classes would be online in any one type of subject matter, if you will, because we tried to diversify the offering. However, if you start in a class that's online, it would be online for the remainder of the semester, for the duration of the semester. Should students self-quarantine in that room once they arrive on campus? That's always a good thing. If, if you want to do that, then we absolutely would not discourage that. But we'll test you when you get here, you know, we'll do the little thermometer thing, check the temperature, and we'll also give you the swab. If you want to self-quarantine while you wait for that to happen, we really would appreciate that, but we're not mandating that.
But we do support your self-isolation, which means that you will make as little movement as possible during the two days that you wait for your test results. So please plan to be limited in your movement for those two days.
How does a non, oh, how does a non-vocal student typically, typically vote during elections?
The question is, how does a first-time student vote? If you're registered to vote, or if you need to register to vote, we'll have a registration campaign for those who are on campus. And you can actually vote as a resident, as a student at Norfolk State University in one of our local voting precincts. So your vote will count. Plan to vote, plan to vote, plan to vote. How will we, how will, how will we handle banned student practices and performance? Banned students will be required to practice social distancing. They won't have the normal banned practice like we're accustomed to seeing all 230 out there in one time. So in all likelihood, the practice is going to take place by section. And then when the time comes to perform, even during the performances, we were doing it such a manner that we would still adhere to social distancing.
Are you ranking up the Spartan Health Center staff and capability?
Are we ranking, are we ramping up the staff, the student health center staffing to be able to assist with the monitoring? Yes, we're in the process now of identifying and hiring additional personnel to help us out at the student health center. The question is, how, what is going to be the protocol for the test? When you arrive on campus, again, you'll be sent to a site. Go to that site, first thing that's going to happen, they're going to give you the, um, radar gun to see what your temperature is. While you're at that site, you'll also give the nasal swab. Nasal swab would then be sent to the laboratory, laboratory will give us the results. Results will come back to the student health center, and you'll be notified of the results. So, so on your checking day, you will receive the test. Will there still be work-study, work-study jobs on campus? Absolutely. We need help, and what we can give help, and we are influencing students. We have psychophiles in our work-study positions, so we'll still be offering work-study. So when you get to school, have in your mind where you want to work. So if you see that listing of available slots, you know what offer you want to spend your time in. By the way, I'll be looking for a work-stud student. The question is, will students have access to the library and the, and the computer labs in the residence hall? The library we know would be open. We are trying to control access to the computer labs. Does, if there's a need for computers, if you don't have a computer, let us know because our IT office is prepared to loan students computers so that we can minimize the traffic in the computer lab. The question is, what activities on campus would be changed or would be offered for the semester? I want to defer to Dr. Brown to speak to it from his perspective. However, I do know that there are often events that we're planning to have that's not going to be virtual. Then there are a lot of things that we're trying to put in place that are virtual that we found out last year that students absolutely enjoy, so we're going to repeat some of those. Dr. Brown, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
I would just add, you know, again, I would agree that we're going to look at a mix of small kind of in-person opportunities for people to be social and interact. The Office of Residence Life and Student Activities have talked about working together to provide programming across campus. But a lot of this, we are going to ask you as students to help us out and to be part of the process of thinking of new ways that we can provide a, you know, a fantastic on-campus experience for students within the limitations that we have with, with the pandemic. So the staff and Student Activities and Residence Life, again, are working together. They definitely have some things planned and some things that we're going to try. But please, reach out to Student Activities in particular and Residence Life if you have ideas. And if your organizations have ideas, work with us so we can make those things happen.
Hello all, I know that you can hear me, and I appreciate the questions that you've added to the chat, and I know we're past our time. We would like to offer 10 more minutes to answer as many questions as possible. So we're going to keep going for 10 more minutes, and then we're going to close down for today. But don't think of this as the last time you'll hear from us.
The question is, do we still have access to the shuttle? Absolutely. The shuttle will be running, and you have to become accustomed to it.
We're social distancing in place.
We will, we will exercise social distancing. Definitely fault, the manner of social distancing, no matter what we say, always going to be part of the solution or the response. The question is, will students who reside in the Spartan Suites be able to reside there over the break? My, my response to that is yes. However, I will defer to Dr. Brown if he doesn't think he wants to add to that.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Dr. Shackelford?
Will students in the Spartan Suites be allowed to stay over the break? And the answer was yes.
Nothing to add.
The question is, how will we handle pocket passes refunds if we have to leave and go home? We're held at the same way we did last semester, during the spring semester. We're prorated, you don't want to be charged for the days that you were here exercising the use of your, of your pocket pass, and we'll refund you for the days that you're not, that you're not here. Will students be allowed to see their advisors at the end of semester? I would say if you, obviously if you're here on campus, you know, you can set up, you can set appointments up with your advisors even right now, even if it's a virtual appointment. Advisors are readily available to meet with any student who's trying to meet with them, whether it's face-to-face or whether it's virtual. How do you, how do we move in and do online classes at the same time? This goes back to a comment that Dr. J made early in the process. Professors are required to record the session. So if you missed it on the day it was given, you can still get access to whatever took place in the class that day. Will the number of COVID cases on campus be made public? No. We're mandated by law to report all COVID positive cases on campus. So the answer to the question would be yes, it would be, will be made public. Will we reduce the meal plan as a result of the lack of options and services? The options are not being reduced, and, and the services are not really being reduced. You're just not able to sit and dine in the dining hall. You'll still get the same meals that we, that we schedule as part of the weekly meal process. So it's just a question of, you know, where you consume your meal, is it in the dining hall, or is it a grab and go, is it a grab and go? So it won't be any changes of the dining charge as a result of that.
So I think people may have the concept that grabbing gold means it's already prepared for you and you don't have options. That's not the case. You will have options, but you just have to take it out. And you'll be spaced out in coming in to exercise those options.
Do we know how mail services will be handled? Mail services will be handled as normal. If you're on campus, whatever your mailbox is that'll go to that. If you're not on campus, and we have a forwarded address for you, which, which we probably have on file, we'll forward to your forwarded address.
This person, is it true that we are going to be doing online classes on campus for three days out of the week, then going to class twice a week? Right, they're asking if they're having some all-online classes and then going actually in the class space.
We do have some classes that are set up to be hybrid classes, there's part-time, face-to-face, and part-time online. Again, when you check your course listing, you know, look and see if it's hyper. If it says, and if it says hyper, that's one of those scenarios where you'll do some online and some face-to-face. And your professor would make those arrangements with you as to what, what takes place when.
And a part of that's done because of social distancing in the classrooms so that everybody has access to be in class with the professor. So that there will be, in the hybrid classes, there will be sometimes alternation between who goes in class which days.
How would labs be handled online? That's going to be a function of how, how your professor who teaches the classroom decides to handle it. That's not one that I have a response to, but I'll try to, I'll try to get something and then we'll make it available. Whoever asked that question, if you were to send that question to covid@nsu.edu, by then we'll have a response to that question. But I'm pretty sure it's going to be a function of what's set up by the professor who teaches the particular class.
For students who have been quarantined, how would they receive their meals?
For students who have been quarantined, how would they receive their meals? Their meals will be brought to the, brought to that, to that room by, by parties from the dining hall. If you have tested negative outside of a two-day window, if you have, I'm sorry. The question is, what if I took the test before I got here, do I have to be tested again? The concept right now is that everybody has to be tested when they get here. However, I think that if the student health center has made a vision, if you have a test result that's not more than two days old, that may suffice to require. If it's, if it's older than two days, you will be tested again. What is the likelihood that the university will delay moving again? Not very likely. The question is, when would tests be done when we move in? The test will be done when you arrive to campus, you'll be sent to a location to check in. That's not necessarily, in fact, that's not going to be in your residence hall. There's a separate location we have set aside that you'll report to. And when you report to that site, you would be administered the test at that time, prior to you going to your room.
We have time for one more question. I think we're just about through all the chatroom questions.
Are we allowed to come on campus now to purchase cards, decals, and books?
Are we allowed to come on campus now to purchase card, card, card decal and books? Yes, you can come on campus, it's not closed. However, when you, when you come on campus, going back to what we said earlier, again, we are enforcing, wear your mask, maintain social distancing, wash, wash your hands frequently. Those, all of those things are still intact.
Once again, Spartans, I want to thank you for your investment in this afternoon. I want to thank you for your time. I want to thank you for your well-thought-out questions. And we appreciate that you were willing to be with us to go through the reopening process. This will not be the last time you hear from us, but we did want to let you know that we're thinking about you, that we want to be as transparent as possible, and we want to communicate with you often. Please look for things in your mailbox, on social media, et cetera, as we move forward and think about other issues that we want to make sure you're aware of. You can always, always send questions to covid@nsu.edu to get expedited answers. Thank you.